So, we'll start with the, I think, approval minutes. Thank you for your approval minutes from last week's meeting.
Second week before last.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Eric Bailey.
All right. Few quick items here we'll run down through and kind of let you know where we're at and kind of what we got going on. Asphalting 195th east side of the lake is completed, so we're glad to have that project.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Glad to have that project completed, and that pretty well wraps up everything that we talked about and discussed for our projects and approved last year. We still have some patch work that if we can get the weather to cooperate, we want to do a little bit more patching, but as far as major projects, I think that's going to be it for the year, budget-wise and weather-wise. Onyx, they did show up. Soldier to Native is complete except for one lane mile of, from Native to Osage. Had a little bit of difficulty with the weather, being a little bit cool and getting it to dry, so they'll be back if the weather cooperates to where they can apply the rest of it, and then we'll just have to monitor it and see how it works.
How the service, I haven't been out there, service pretty good?
It's, it's pretty good. Like I said, there's some places that they had some issues trying to get it to dry. It rutted a little bit, but they came back in and fixed it and...
Is the rutting service compared to chip seal or is quality?
It's not, it doesn't have near the surface that you would with a chip and seal, so, but it does have a lot of elasticity to it, so we'll see how that works with the expansion contraction. We did leave some cracks on the south or on the north end by Soldier. I wanted to see how that would fill in. It filled in a little bit, but we'd probably better go back with the pothole patcher and kind of fill those in just to get it sealed, but I wanted to see when they went through how, how, how that worked, so.
It'll be interesting to see how it wears compared to the chip seal over a three, four-year period.
Absolutely.
That'd be what's interesting.
Right.
I hope it does well. I hope so.
Right.
I think we're, I mean, and just my opinion is just the weather, so I don't think if the weather was right for them, and I don't think we're going to get a good bond. I don't think it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be right.
I don't know. We'll just have to check and see.
I mean, that's just my opinion. I just, after watching it and looking at it and driving on it.
I went out there once when they had traffic all backed up the flag and so I turned and went the other way.
Right.
I guess I'm concerned about that. Yeah, in the summertime, I think it's probably a great deal, but...
Yeah. My quick concern is, as I just mentioned, the wear of the running service over a three to five-year period.
Right.
I hope it's better. I hope it's just as good because it'd be great for us if it is.
Right.
But that's going to be the key.
Right.
That running service, that's a intent of a chip seal or what you're doing is the same thing. Seal plus a running service.
Right.
Good. I'm glad you got it done on Austin.
They were, we were also going to do 75th from 54 to Maple, but with the, the road has deteriorated a little bit, and they did not feel that it was a good candidate for putting that surface on, so we will have to look at chip and seal and that and go from there, so.
Okay.
Anyhow, that's where we're at with the, with the onyx. Col Valley did finish the geotechnical engineering report for a bridge on 160th and Fern. Just like we thought, there's pretty good rock out there from what little bit I've read through there, so anyhow, that just letting you know that I did receive the report back on that. Sidewalk here on the north side of the courthouse is called in for locates. We plan on starting that either the latter part of this week or first part of next week. We'll start on the east end. Going to start on the west end, but with the situation down there with the road and what have you, we've had conversations with the city and anyhow, they're looking into some solutions as well, but we're going to get started on the east end, work our way up to it and go from there, so.
That's great.
We are going to have some inconvenience for people for a little while, but be a good, nice finished product when we're done.
And I'd like to do it on the east end first because that'll address ADA.
ADA. That's another thing that, yes.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yep.
260th and Kansas, crossroad tube there, that is, was replaced yesterday. I know it's one that we had a citizen call in here earlier in the summer, so anyhow, that is, I want to let you know that is completed.
Thank you.
And taken care of yesterday. We still need to go back and do some more ditching in the area, but as far as getting the culvert in so water can stay in the ditch, that is done, so that should help coming over the hill a little bit and washing the road out. Winter storm prep, we kind of got by last night without any snow. I think some of our western counties and maybe northern got a little bit of snow. Anyhow, went through and got a couple trucks round and ready and got the spreaders and plows and everything put in. We are full on salt. We've got all of our salt in. Got the last load in yesterday, so I don't know if we want to say we're ready for storm, but we're about as ready as can be, provided we can ever get our one truck back that's still in the shop, so.
Is part of your plan still brine if you need to?
Oh, absolutely.
I figured it would, but I just asked.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that will help. Provided, you know, you've got to play the temperatures too.
Right, sure.
I've seen it go the other way by putting the brine down and making actual, when it's super, sub-zero cold, it doesn't work as well, but anyhow, no, we will definitely use that again. That helps us out getting that pulled off. Also, just like the truck, the John Deere skid steer went down with DEF issues as well, so just letting you know, we're going to have to take it back again and, and see what we can do to get this figured out on the DEF, but Justin's still looking into the things, and I think we'll have a, an idea for you maybe next week. Visit with you on that next week.
Okay.
And then last but not least, all the guys at Public Works want to say thank you for the longevity pay. Really do appreciate that, so they want me to be sure and pass that along.
Tell them they earned it.
That's right.
So, they earned every penny of it, so.
So.
A good, good bunch of guys.
Yep. Anyhow, that's all I have. Anything for me today?
Are you going to talk about that crack sealer just a little bit, or is it coming up very soon?
It's, it's still a month or two away, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You've got lots of time, man.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's about a month away, I want to say. Yeah, it's in December if I remember correctly.
I'd say it's a good, get a good crack sealer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Courtney, yeah, on longevity pay. Courtney, come in please.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Okay.
Sure, thank you. Um, I just was going to discuss the longevity pay that we just paid out last week.
Good.
And so I brought some paperwork.
Sorry.
Um, I just wanted to discuss some of the feedback that I received from the employees. Most of it was awesome. They were very thankful. They were kind of shocked by it. They weren't prepared to receive it, so communicated, you know, that they were getting it, but it was, it was received well. There were some questions though regarding taxes because it is taxed income and they must pay capers on that, so a lot of employees, if they received the hundred dollars, after taxes it was about eighty-six dollars, which is fine, but there were employees and it would take a lot of time for me to go through and find out who they all were, but they have like added deductions removed from their federal tax withholdings, so if somebody has like an additional fifty dollars or sixty taken from their pay stubs, that, that happened this time too. So there were some employees that only received twenty dollars out of the hundred. People who received more, you know, they didn't notice that, but the people from new to five, right below five years, some of them were affected by that, and so they had questions regarding that. We also had an employee and it threw an error on the system whenever I processed, that they had a withholding of a hundred dollars on their federal, so they would have had to have paid the county because that's not like a report that I can pull, and some of them have had it for such a long time, they forget it's on there, or I don't know it's on there, so those were some things that we did run into. Something else that we ran into because this was the first time that we had done the one hundred dollars were the service purchase credits, so people who have capers and maybe they were in the military and they're buying back those years of service, they are doing a withholding, a paycheck withholding every pay, pay period. That is also required out of longevity pay, and that was something I figured out after. So, we have two people that are doing the service purchase credits. One is for thirty-six forty-three and one is for forty-three fifty for a total of seventy-nine ninety-three. When we do something like, like this, we, in the future, I will remember to, to subtract that, but we weren't able to this time because it was set up pretty quickly. So if they received the hundred dollars, which these two were within the one hundred dollars, they would have had to have paid all, all of their taxes plus that service purchase, so they would not, one of them was seventy-nine ninety-three, so they don't really get longevity for that.
Yeah.
So I do have some suggestions maybe to take into account, you know, if we do this again next year for the one hundred is maybe do Visa gift cards for them, for the people receiving the one hundred because of the taxes, because of the capers, service purchase, because of things like that.
It's still a taxable benefit.
Is it?
Yeah, you would have to run it through, you'll have to run the taxes on that hundred dollars because it's a taxable benefit.
We give gifts, they're actually all the taxes.
Yeah.
We give for us last year, didn't we?
I know, and we didn't do it correctly.
Okay.
So, that's just a suggestion, you know, just so the employees can actually receive that benefit and see it, because some of them, I did receive some phone calls and they said, we were supposed to receive a hundred, why do I only have twenty dollars? And I said, well.
I understand.
There are taxes and because of your deductions, that's not a report that I can run to see who all is receiving, taking more out of their federal.
As a group, we can maybe do better planning.
Yes, so that was my next, that is my next thing to touch on is on the backside.
It's still a benefit.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
I mean, I mean, we're given money. If you don't want it, don't take it.
Right.
I'm sorry. You pay your taxes, you pay, everybody has to pay taxes.
Right.
I mean...
I think the thing was they probably didn't realize that they had that extra withholding coming out that they set up on day one, so it was kind of forgotten. So when I explained it, I mean, they were all understanding of it, but it was just kind of a shock.
Well, the easiest way to just not do the one hundred dollars, one year, one, four, or five, just...
Yeah, I mean, whatever you would like to do.
Well, the easiest, it won't make a lot of problems.
Yes, so I just wanted to give you the feedback, you know, because if I didn't, then you wouldn't know what was going on. The next thing is I did attach a calendar for next November. If you want, if you want to pay out in November, I did put the holidays on there, and with election this week falling on a holiday week, it took a ton of time because I did have to set up codes specifically for the longevity, and I had to set up a separate pay in our system and on capers, so it, there is a lot of process that happens before I can pay out. So if I just knew, you know, a couple weeks in advance, or if we could, you know, plan, that would be very beneficial. Also something, and I, I talked to Susan about it when I was processing, is because anybody who maybe has a start date in December and we're paying out in November, I have to go through and manually change all of those people's hire dates so that it's like they're getting paid through the end of the year, and so that, that extra, that extra time is added on there, and so it does just take a lot of time and planning for me, so.
On my part, you can start planning now for next year.
And I would, I would appreciate that, just so we can get it all done and it's done correctly and, and not rushed through. And then the next thing, I did have a question regarding, you know, elected officials who had then turned into employees and the time that they had spent as elected, if that counted towards years of service.
Well, I think the keepers, it would count as years of service. I don't see elected official being credited for a longevity. That's my opinion.
Yeah, elected officials don't have to take the capers when they're elected, so that is something, you know, to take into account as well.
So technically, it's still length of year of service that they're sitting here or in this position.
So from last year, we didn't, we didn't pay anybody who had been elected for those years. We just paid from when they began working as an employee, so that's what I did this year, so if we want to change that, I mean, just let me know on what I need to do.
Yeah. We'll let you know about, you know, I don't think elected officials, including us three, Ashley or, you know, we have, we've had some people work for it.
And no elected official received.
So, I don't think we want to go there either.
Yep.
I don't want it.
It's just the, you know, elected official who then goes to a different department, you know, so.
Yeah.
And that was the question that I, you know, that I was asked, so. That's that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. I also have AP here.
While you guys are signing that.
Okay. That's accounts payable?
Accounts payable, yeah, so. What is, paper clipped is for this week, and then there are some that were not previously signed from the weeks before that you guys had looked at, so there's that. If you have any questions, I can pull invoices or whatever.
I see mine, I don't remember if it was a Blue Flame, I guess that's a gas company or Blue something.
Blue Mark.
Blue Mark is...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I figured, but I didn't.
Do I need to sign each one of these?
No, that's just for review.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Gotcha. Yeah, I saw this.
Yeah, and Justin looked through it.
Those mills, is that price for a week, per week?
I'm sorry?
The mills for our correctional center was, they had several on there. Is that per week?
Summit?
Like three thousand each one?
I think, yeah.
So we spend three thousand a week on food out there?
Each pay, we, yeah, that's their invoice. Two weeks.
Every, it's every two weeks? No comment?
All right, if you don't have any questions, then I'll go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Doesn't that facility have an ice kitchen in it? It's air. I'm just curious. Yeah. Morning, Mr. Superintendent. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Okay, for an old guy. What's low your meeting last night? I appreciate how low-key it seemed, and maybe it got worse, I don't know, but seemed like everyone was pretty laid back in that meeting.
So down there, where these guys are.
Yeah, and that's a plus.
Is that a proclamation?
Well, yeah, what do you want? Oh, the proclamation? I handed it to him, so, oh.
You want, you're usually reading it?
No, I...
Is he going to have to talk about it?
I just want to make sure I gave it to someone.
Destra's going to have to talk about it, right?
Gina just emailed it to me, so I didn't know.
It's this?
Okay.
This is what we did, and then that's what it wants to do.
I think you're here to talk about it, I think. I don't have it to work like that.
Destra, are you here or do we do something about preschoolers or?
I'm just here because I haven't been to a commission meeting yet.
Okay, okay.
So, I've been to the city one, but I haven't been to this.
Okay.
Just much old country boys over here. Looking like all the blue. Well, I get them a day or two before. I never did, I probably got one yesterday, but I didn't even get the agenda that you sent to me the second time. Of course, I'm busy, I didn't either.
I see Susan said she didn't either.
Did you get agenda last week?
No, and I, I found out I wasn't on the email list. I was actually getting them from Deb Martin. I was getting it from the Republican Party.
I got one.
Did you?
So, huh.
He's important. Hey, that it? Ashley Schelm and Mr. Brown.
He's not here for that.
Candace Reed, oh, you're not here for that? Candace Reed to preschoolers.
Proclamation.
Okay, so Bourbon County, a proclamation, it is, whereas the citizens of Bourbon County stand firmly committed to promoting reading as important for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas our schools provide significant leadership in the area of community involvement and the education of our youth grounded in the principle that early childhood educational investment is key to the community's well-being and students' future academic success, and whereas Kansas Reads to Preschoolers is a state annual celebration of reading in November, which promotes reading to children under the age of five. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bourbon County Commission calls on the citizens of Bourbon County to read to preschoolers the week of November 29. So, read to your kids, I think is what that amounts to.
Yes, thank you. I think that's great. Bourbon County will declare a proclamation saying that, so, thank you for the, what the school board...
And I talked with Vance about it as well. I don't know if he called Nelson or not, but he, I talked to him about it.
You know, of course, his wife's a teacher and my son's in administration, but I don't know enough people appreciate what they do.
Are you under five?
Anyway, we appreciate what the teacher and everyone does at U234 and 235. It's, it's a thankless job they're charged with, so, anyway. Okay, I'd like to do executive session. Three commissioners and Justin.
Can that be cleared up so you can use it?
Okay.
Papers on the table.
Oh, about the cameras.
They're out.
They're out. Ten minutes?
Make a motion to go into executive session, case 75 S4319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected persons to protect their privacy. Three commissioners, Counselor Meeks, be for ten minutes. It's dealing with job performance. We return here at nine thirty to leave this room and return back to this room at nine thirty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Justin went that way. We're going this way or that way? I don't care.
Justin.
Wrong way?
Wrong way.
No, not the way.
Yeah. 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 No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way. Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah.
No, not the way.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, not the way.
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 Yeah.
It's a blessing when I get up every day.
Yes.
Why?
I know.
It's so misleading.
We get up and we're excited.
Sorry.
Blame on me too big.
I'm like, oh, I gotta come home.
I'm sorry?
We need to pack.
He's a big guy.
About it.
Yeah.
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 It's pretty unusual.
Some more gets that award.
He's a good footballer.
He's an athlete.
And, believe it or not, it's sophomore, fifth state, right?
Come back.
He must play bigger school.
Well, oh, to see the road.
But for 15.
Yes.
I think it's big.
He's 6'5", 290 right now.
Big kid.
Yeah.
He loves football.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Clifton, vacation sick time.
So, I mean, we've talked about this for a couple of years. I guess I would need somebody to tell me actually what our vacation sick time policies are because, I mean, every ti...I mean, for two years now, I'm not sure I can tell you exactly what they are.
And it's, it's crazy to have all this mess to me. It's not, just doesn't make sense.
We need to have maybe a new policy by January first, maybe.
We can do that. Throw me some dates at some point, we'll schedule a work session and just walk through that whole section.
I have checked my hunting schedule. I have a long list of trips. Anyway, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Clifton?
No, I just think we need, we need to do something about it.
I agree. We just need to make it simple, easy, workable for all our employees, so. Justin Meeks.
I would defer my time to the very end of the meeting, just in case. I know Ms. Susan's got a ton of stuff and I can wait till the very end after public comments.
Okay.
Make a motion to move Justin Meeks after public comment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Susan Bancroft. Big list of stuff on there.
I know. So, I think, um, I think the group finally landed on the Christmas dinner being on November 30th, unless something changed since I was out. So, November 30th from 11:00 to 12:30 at the 4H Building. And we will have it catered. And I think the elected officials were bringing desserts.
So, I'm gonna, before you go on, so we can get this out of the way, I'll make a motion that the three commissioners can intend the Christmas dinner on November 30th. All there, be all there together, no business will be conducted.
Second.
At the, at the 4H Building.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Clifton.
My next thing is, um, section one of the handbook. Um, I had sent that ahead of time.
Can we back up just a minute?
Yeah.
That grant funds park and recreation. Was that the list you gave us?
Oh, shoot. I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
My question.
I don't have that.
Was that the list you, was on our email yesterday, or?
No.
That went through ready?
No, that's on down. That's down, on down further. So, I don't know what that is unless, um, under my, there's grant applications.
Okay.
So, maybe, I'll, I'll talk about that when I get there. Okay?
Okay.
Section one of the handbook. I had sent that to you. I had shared it with, um, the department heads so that they could review it and come back with any questions that they may have. The only part that I need to visit with the commission about is whether or not you want to have a mission and vision statement, which really essentially just kind of sets the direction of the county and what are our values. But that in itself is probably a work session, um, if you guys want to come up with a mission and vision statement. We could keep it out of the handbook, but there's never, we've never had one. So, I had given some examples of mission, vision, values, goals of what other counties do. And so, that's kind of what I want to open this up for discussion is if we want to do something like that.
You know my thoughts, I'm sure. Absolutely. I think the whole thing is stupid. Anything related to corporate mentality is absolutely not in my vocabulary.
I don't think a mission statement fits in the employee handbook.
Okay. How do you feel?
The room is spoken. I know, I'm not too dogmatic about it, so.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll take it out of that section and then we'll, what I would ask is if you would adopt that section one of the handbook.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Did you send that to department heads who were at the meeting, or did you email it? Because I don't recall getting it.
Um, I think I emailed it to everybody, but we were also, we also were in that. It came with the agenda.
With the, yeah, the meeting.
You need another week to look at it, or?
Uh, if, if it's no trouble, and I apologize, um, it probably got lost amongst my, amongst my email, because I get a million of them every day, but if that's no trouble, I would like an opportunity to review it.
Yeah, Angel did get, um, a copy, so she was there in attendance.
And I guess, let's say theoretically, a, a mission statement was adopted. It could be changed at the drop of a hat.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
It was in the, it was on the agenda, Tiana, at the bottom as an attachment.
Okay, thank you.
If you got, I mean, but some people didn't get the agenda.
A mission statement can be run a little par rap.
Thanks.
If it's something that we want to save our employees, how we appreciate them, or our expectation, you know, with that John Wayne said, "You do a job, I pay you." So, I don't know how you clean that up, so. I don't, we don't, we don't give jobs. We hire men and women, so, another John Wayne statement, so.
Well, and part of that, I kind of explained what a mission and a vision statement are, but if, if we don't want to include it here, then we don't have to.
Okay.
I just, I, I just need some direction wh- as I finish up section one. Section one really is just, um, kind of a welcoming to the.
It's pretty basic.
Yeah, it's very basic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read it.
I'm okay without it, so.
Okay. Then I will take it out of there. And then I will be back to present it again next week for adoption.
Okay.
Is that okay? The next one, Commissioner Blythe had asked me about appropriations. Um, I had also sent that to you, but here's, um, another copy of it and what we can and can't fund.
That's on different area.
Um, in addition to that, Deb Needleman, we had asked, um, that, uh, the elderly send us that, oh, what is it called? Department of Aging.
Yeah.
What they do. And so, she sent a good, long explanation.
She did a really good job.
Of how they spend their funds.
I'm surprised that the city doesn't participate in that, I guess. Whatever.
How surprised are you? I shouldn't say that shit.
So, really that was, it was, I was just asked to ca- to gather up some information for you all and, um, feel like I've provided that to you.
So, these are some departments you was asking about funding?
Mm-hmm.
Basically, it's, if you add up all the optional, you know, that adds up to a lot amount of money, I think we should consider if it could be spent better, other places. Not saying it can be, but it's definitely something to look, look into.
Mm-hmm.
The last four are optional. Yeah. Wait, this one up there, it's optional, too.
Juvenile detention.
I mean, you talk about things like boosting employee morale or getting more qualified people. You know, maybe some of this money could be used for training or bonuses, or something like that.
So, juvenile detention, that's funding we send over to facility and the houses or juveniles?
Um, there's a lot of history there, so I, I kind of want to, um, if you want the whole history lesson, I can do that now. But basically, it's a co-op. It's kind of like our last two with mental health and intellectual disabilities. So, if we didn't have that, if we weren't part of that co-op, we would actually have to have our own facility, which would cost millions to build, because you can't detain juveniles with adult prisoners. Also, you could do a, a bed paid by the day, but unfortunately, there are very few facilities in the state of Kansas. And so, if they're full and you're not part of their co-op, you can't get a kid in to their facility, which means that we'll be paying for two sheriff's deputies, or actually four sheriff's deputies to watch that kid 24/7. We've had a kiddo in the facility since, I mean, it's been, you know, over a year now. I'm continuously having at least one juvenile in that facility, so if you divide that per day, it's expensive, but it'd be, it's a lot cheaper than having someone sit on them at a hotel room and worrying about the liability and the, all the issues like that, running, that type of stuff. And we've spent a lot of time with this a while back. That rate was decreased. There was a, a lot of time spent trying to get that number down. I think they're bored down. I'm sorry?
Wasn't it 120?
It was, I think it was like nine or 10,000 a month. Yeah, it might have been 10 at one point.
I'm not, I'm not sure. It's actually not less than 90 now.
Yeah, it's less than 90.
I think it's 79.
Yeah. So, that number's come way down. We spent a lot of time talking to other, uh, facilities about giving us a guaranteed bed space, and none of them could do that. They couldn't guarantee a space. And actually, one, I, I think, and don't quote me on this, but a couple of years ago, one of the juvenile detention centers up by Topeka closed down, so there's actually fewer bed spaces than there are, than there were. And the legislators could swim, swing the pendulum back, too, where, you know, five or 10 years from now, they could actually end up housing more kids in juvenile detention. But, um, not to talk about any cases specific, but there's been some pretty high-profile cases where we have juveniles. I think there's three actually detained right now that I'm aware of that need to be there. And that'd be very expensive daily rate. You'd be talking about three hotel rooms and six sheriff's deputies, which we wouldn't have, because you'd have to have a sheriff's deputy probably in the room.
That's, I mean, like, you know, that's assuming there's not a bed available in Kansas City.
I would, I would, I'd put 100 bucks, well, I'd put 50 bucks right now that most of the facilities are probably full, because there's so limited space. Like, I know, we have like kids that are, um, have no run orders and they have no room at the end. They're, there's a waiting list, so.
I think, I, I just wanted to.
You mean they have no room, har- sorry, Tiana, they have no room at Gerard Force?
Well, they do, because we have a guaranteed bed space.
I was gonna say, they better.
Well, they do. We have, we have a guaranteed bed space. I'm just saying if we had a, if we didn't have that guaranteed bed space, I think we'd have a hard time.
Okay, I see.
Finding a facility with another bed available right now. And we have three kids right now that are there as of two days ago.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and I was gonna say that, uh, sorry to interrupt it, but I just want to let you know the closeness of Gerard as well helps, because for some hearings, they'll need to be transported. If they were further away, that's going to be an extra expense and time and everything for them to be brought to Bourbon County and then taken back. Gerard is close and it, it seems to work out, you know. If we can't do a Zoom and they need to be brought here, it, it works out, so.
And to talk about the other four that's on that list, and once again, this is just information only. I'm not trying to create opinion on this. I did look, and I talked to Susan and I talked to a member of the fair board. That, that statute could be interpreted differently. I mean, I think that it, it says there's some shall funding depending on population, but I think that we don't probably want to go down.
Well, that's the smallest amount.
I know, I'm just, yeah, I know.
It's a very confusing, it jumps all over the place, that statute does.
And then the, uh, the two mental health, we have, it's a lot like a co-op, too, like Gerard. Uh, I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. We have a Southeast Kansas mental health that's here in our community. That money would not be able to support that facility and the type of people that we have, uh, at that facility with, with the amount of money that's paid.
There's no facility.
It's just right down here on, no?
There's no facility for, for mental health patients in Southeast Kansas.
Well, no, they have, it's an office for screening, counseling, sorry. I'll clarify my, it's a clinic.
They do. The screening's on Zoom now.
Yeah, and they still, they still have in-person meetings and stuff at this.
What do they do? They need overnight stay somewhere.
That's a different, um, that's called a care and treatment. That's a different issue. That, that deals with laryngeal or osowatamy, and there's an actual court hearing that they go through if they're screened in to be a danger to themselves or others. And the, um, I talked to the assistant director of the Conservation District. There's a matching grant that the state does with that. There's a, you know, we had a long conversation about that, lots of information there. Is, he's not aware of any state, uh, counties that do not fund the Conservation District. But that's, once again, up to you guys to make that decision.
That's not the standard, obviously, what other counties do.
Well, every county in the state funds the conserv- the conservation, sorry, I didn't understand the question.
I mean, just, that doesn't necessarily mean we have to, though.
No, no, I understand. There's a matching grant that you give for 25,000 that I think if you're gonna do that, you should at least do the minimum, but he listed off all the things that they do and, you know, that's whatever, that's, that's up to you guys.
And intellectual disabilities?
Same thing. It's, that's the same kind of co-op that you have.
Is that Tri Valley?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think you get a lot of bang for your buck there, too. And my, that is an opinion. I should keep my opinions to myself.
We appreciate your opinion.
Yeah, sorry. And I remember, really, the, the legal part of this is that if you have those people in your community, you're gonna have to get those services from somewhere. And right now, you're in co-ops. Just like the juvenile detention center, I don't, you know, think that you could get it any more affordable. But, you know, you could obviously build your own facility or have the bed spaces at a local hotel or have something like that, but you cannot detain juveniles and adults in the same facility.
Now, this is, this is kind of a moot point, um, but the old jail, did anyone think about maybe using that as a juvenile detention center?
They, they talked about that. The thing is, is that there are times where you don't have any juveniles, and so you'd have a full staff with.
Could you has other jurisdictions juveniles in there?
Well, we, the, the problem is, is we have a, we have a facility in Gerard that's literally 20 miles away, so they've kind of beat us to the punch, but we started, we were part of that co-op since day one, since the first day of the brick went in, you know, the first mortar was in the ground. I mean, obviously, if, legally, I think if I was the county attorney, not to put words in anybody's mouth, but, you know, you have to house that juvenile person. You want that option to be able to detain them. And if you don't have a guaranteed bed space, I would be very nervous.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So, you gotta have the guaranteed bed space. And if you could have the facility in Western Kansas or up in, I think there's one in Shawnee, if they would guarantee Bourbon County a bed space, that we take a kid up there, they would guarantee to take that kid, and they had a different funding mechanism, I'd be all for it. But the last time we did this, a couple of years back, they couldn't guarantee a bed space. That was the problem. Because at that point, like, right now, you would literally have three kiddos. I think one's a female, two are male. So, you would at least have to have four deputies watching those kids, because you'd have some liability issues that you'd have to worry about harming themselves, that kind of thing. You'd have to have a hotel room, they'd have to take all the stuff out that a kid could harm themselves with. I mean, you'd have to create a, like, a mini jail within a, some type of environment. It doesn't have to be a hotel. It could be an apartment, whatever, but you gotta have an environment to where they can't harm themselves.
I believe that Gerard provides schooling as well.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're getting everything that they would typically get and, and not in any other kind of environment. So, they're, they're, uh, getting schooling activities, so, so they're not missing anything with regard to education while they're being detained.
I was talking about the minimums that you'd have to supply. I mean, the GED programs or the schools, the credits, that's another, another issue of that. Three square mils. So, I, I come in, Susan, she did a great job. It was easier for me to do the legal work on this, because it, she had it spelled out pretty well, so. And once again, those last four are, I, I'd say the fair board is probably, statutorily, I would say that's probably not really an option. I mean, you ha- I think you have to fund it. I mean, there's, we, you, we could litigate it if we wanted to, but I think that based off the amount that you're paying and then the way the statute reads, I think you're getting, you're okay there.
Doesn't that answer your questions, or you want to discuss it more, or?
Well, I'm sure we'll discuss it more later, because, you know, there's too much stuff to figure out right now. Like, I guess the next step would be what the minimum is, you know, if, even, I mean.
I don't think there's, there's not a minimum. I mean, the ones that are there, um.
Well, the shals, too.
Well, so like the coroner, that will vary.
Yeah.
Every year. So, you can't really say that there's a minimum on the health board. The only thing, um, the only one that has a child is the, um, area on aging, that one. And, um, I had asked Ashley to look up for the funding that was set at 2001. And, um, she's been busy with the election, so I didn't, didn't press with that. Yeah. So, once we find that, that budget year, um, that's when I can determine what that minimum was. But all the other ones are kind of as incurred type of thing.
Susan, without reading this entire memo at this time, how many of those lunches are in Fort Scott? Do you know percentage?
She didn't really give us that detail, I don't think.
We're getting ready to have a city-county luncheon. I think we need to talk about this with the city.
Yeah.
Because I was told 90% of them is inside the city limits and the city funds zero.
Yeah. I mean, I can ask for that detail from her if you'd like from me, too.
I'd like, I'd like to have that on the agenda for a luncheon next week, so. It's a great cause, but everyone needs to help. Okay, that is, on that one?
Before you move on, it's two minutes left to end of the term, you have to have our closing.
Okay.
Stand by after what?
We're closing things.
Getting ready to have a public hearing.
At 10 o'clock?
Yes.
10 o'clock.
That's okay.
Do we, do we get handouts for that? Yep, you got a handout.
Yep.
I don't see that on the agenda. Okay. So, you'll have to add that to the agenda.
On the city agenda, or?
County agenda, because it's not on the agenda.
I haven't, is there an agenda? Are you talking about the city meeting?
No, the agenda, this, this meeting, if there's a hearing, you need to add.
Up here.
Okay, okay, I didn't see it.
I didn't see it yesterday either, so. Mr. Destry, we're gonna lunch it then. If you want to join us, probably at the new pizza place. Would you enjoy your company? I didn't even put you on, get you a bite.
I'm busy. I can't make it.
I was getting ready to invite you to Mark McCoy.
I have doctors.
Okay.
Physical therapy, so I can do better than this.
That's important. You're getting ready to shoot that bird.
Yeah, another, I, my, my arthritis in my hand is affecting my ability to, uh, do things that I want to do.
Well, I understand that. And I went out and set some corner posts last week and mixed the concrete and all, all that good stuff. About third day, I could tell it afterwards, but I'm okay now, but might be getting a little agey to be doing that, but it's still fun.
You know, I mean, you're past 39, so.
Yes, barely. I got a birthday in two weeks, so.
Forty.
Forty-nine. I've been, I've been long, I've been married longer than 49 years.
We celebrated twice.
Yeah.
We're very big fans of Jack Benny. My mother was 39.
Yeah, I understand that.
Never asked a lady your age.
Right.
I had my, my dick straightened, so that, you know, I was 27 for a very long time.
Megan, here's which one's first? Do this one first? Oh, he's not here? Who's gonna, you're gonna explain to us what it is?
These are the.
Who, oh, Laura, she was here. She turned it off on us, didn't she?
It's the decommissioning of roads, right, thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, this one right here?
Come here, Laura. We're getting ready to start this, and she said you tell us, soon as, soon as Clifton gets, soon as Clifton gets back, so.
I made copies.
So, nobody's contesting it, so we just.
Yeah, this gentleman owns both property, both sides of the property.
This mine, all mine, or?
Yes, Belford does, yes.
So, Ashley, you're, I guess you gotta open up the hearing first, don't I? Okay, I'd like to open up the, uh, public hearing regarding road vacation. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Belford, and Ashley, I'm assuming you have sent all the legal notices we have to have to allow anyone to be present that wants to contest this or support it, and I'll give the floor over to the registry of deeds.
Okay. Um, on Mr. Belford, he owns both, both sides of the, the property, so he was the only one that needed to sign this. It's approximately just 110 by 34 feet on 45th Street. It is not a maintained road now. So, um, it's at the end of, it's between a section, um, five and section six in Township 24, Range 22. It just comes to the end of, um, where, just a little bit past where his driveway is. And he just wants to keep people from riding their four-wheelers down there is what it is. So, he wants to be able to just put a gate up at his driveway, so it keeps people out. He owns, like I said, he owns both sides of the property, um, so he was the only one that was needing to sign this. So, um, on behalf of Mr. Um, Belford, I'm requesting for you to go ahead and crow, close that. It's only 110 feet. Like I said, we don't maintain that now, so.
So, we just vote on it, then? Okay.
Tim, do you know where this is?
Pardon me?
Do you know where it's at?
I looked it up this morning, right up here, middle of nowhere. You have a recommendation on this? Oh, you haven't seen it? Way up there. Hootouse don't even go up there. He owns all sides of it.
Yeah.
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 It's not maintained right now.
Yeah.
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 Okay, I vote to close it.
That motion?
Yeah.
Second it?
Before we vote, any discussion from the crowd? It is a public hearing, so you have an opportunity to speak if you'd like. Okay?
Okay. So, I'm gonna, um, piggyback off Nelson's motion and make the motion to include Resolution 1522, Resolution Vacating the Road in Franklin Township, Bourbon County, Kansas.
Second.
And I guess I second it.
Any discussion? We had two seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's, uh, what road was Susan wanting?
Okay, second request.
Ah, here it is.
Is, uh, Ms. Susan Bancroft. Her address is 2029 Maple Road. It's a section of land between her and her.
Sorry, go ahead.
Neighbor to the west. It's a, actually, it's a platted road called Horford Drive.
Correct.
That would actually serve the area to the north if it was developed, correct? So, do you like to speak first, Susan? I see you have a neighbor here that wants to speak. No comments?
It's a 415-foot by 60-foot wide Horford Drive in Horford Edition in Bourbon County. And there is a map here, and it is not a maintained road, correct?
From what I understand from Odie, and this is something that he and I both wanted to do together, and unfortunately, he's not able to be here to talk to it. Um, and honestly, I, I didn't know it was on the agenda. But when you look at the terrain, even if it were to be developed, it would cost, it would cause some water issues because of the way the hill runs down into my property. I already have a lot of, um, concerns in the back part of my property of how that is done, but there would have to be, um, some, some kind of a way to catch some of that runoff. Otherwise, it goes directly into my garage.
Something like a terrace or something?
Yes, or some kind of a, um, um, maybe a French drain system, because water comes down off that hill and sets. I've, I've done some work this year, um, to try and catch some of that water, to, to drain it on out to the ditch, but it stays very wet in that area most of, most of the year during spring and fall. So, it makes it very hard to maintain. Um, in the summertime, when it's really hot, you know, it's not, it's not a big issue, but, um, there are some concerns with the runoff, so if that, you know, without ever were to be developed, it would be a concern for both of us.
I understand. We see we have another neighbor here. Mr. Marbury, would you like to get up and speak, please?
You guys familiar with that strip of ground?
Mm-hmm.
She's talking about, when Frank sold that, there was one stipulation. He cut all, they cut all the highway frontage off of that 160, and they did that. Stipulation was that that remaining 120 would have access to that blacktop road, uh, for future development. Obviously, that's, it devalues, without that access, it devalues that property. We have plans. I don't know when, um, you know, mainly probably, my kids, when they're of age, gonna build back around that hill. So, that will be the access to them. If it does create water issues, we're more than happy to take care of that at the time. That road was there before any of those houses, so just tends to believe that if there was a problem, they should have thought about that before they bought those homes, in my.
If that road was closed, where would be the next access, or would you have another one to that property?
We wouldn't have one to there. You'd have to, because you've got the river to deal with. The other one you'd have, it'd be half a mile away.
I know the river to the north, right?
Right, so, and you'd have to co, you'd have to fence it, keep the cattle in for half a mile to get back there to it, so. In a, in a sense, you'd be landlocked in that section by vacating this road.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the audit? It is a public hearing, public notice here, so. You wanna speak first, Nelson, or Clepton, or?
So, what's, um, what are the other two neighbors, Susan, you and the other individual?
She's assigned to one neighbor.
Okay, um, what are the reasonings for closing it, for wanting to close it?
Uh, the road would be very close to my property. It'd run pretty close to my garage. Um, Odie has, his is a little bit higher up on the hill, but that would run just exactly right beside my garage.
If.
And I, you know, I bought.
Is there a room, if there was really a road there, that would give you access to your garage in, in better fashion than you have now? If there was really a road there?
No.
Wouldn't?
It would not give me any better access. Because I've already, I've already realigned mine to.
I see.
To, to be there.
I'd have to do a little bit more digging. I don't believe that there is any deed restrictions. I don't believe that there's anything, um, on the plat that says that, that this would remain open for future access for this. I don't think that there's anything on the plat that says that this guarantees to stay open. Otherwise, this would have needed to be maintained and maintained as a road. But I would have to go back and look on the plat itself, and then also look at the two deeds to the properties of Susan's and Odie's properties to see if it says that that road has to stay open. Because if it is not a restriction that that road has to stay open, then it is, it wouldn't be a, a restriction.
Right.
For, um.
I don't think you'll find that on a original plat or on her deed. Says it has to be.
Unfortunately, for Mr. Marbury.
Yeah, it's on the plat.
It might be on the plat that it's platted, but that doesn't mean it guarantees that it.
Right.
Stay open for your future benefit if you have access in any other way to get to your property for future development.
It also doesn't guarantee we'll close it either.
No, it doesn't, but it doesn't mean that.
Right, there's no guarantee.
No guarantee, yes. And if you're not gonna, if it's not gonna be maintained, if it is a platted road and it stays open, then the county would need to maintain it if you keep it open. So, therefore, if it's closed, then it obviously goes to the two landowners. So you've got it to where either you maintain it, if you keep it open.
So, so, can I stop you, Rick?
Yes.
Sorry Laura, you, you said to the two owners. The fact matters, there's three owners.
There's three owners.
No.
He wouldn't absorb any taxes because we take in the land.
It's the, the two properties adjacent to it, not to the end.
He owns probably on the north end of that road.
But, but. Right, but.
There's a road easement there that goes to the property he owns.
Right, but the property would go, it's to the.
If you abandon it, yeah.
Right, if you abandon it, it's whoever owns on the left and whoever owns on the right.
But the road was plotted there for hopes of future development.
Correct. But you either have to maintain it or you have to abandon it. We have tons of roads that I would like to work on and, and get abandoned. Well, no, it's not a right of way. It's a road that's never been.
It's a platted road. That platted road means it's a public right of way, correct?
You either have to maintain it or.
I would table this and let Ms. Holdridge do our investigation and get to the bottom of what the, because what was said is that the landowner thinks it's a deed restriction or it's actually on the deed, and I think the other two landowners are probably saying it's not on the deed. We need, that's a really important question that needs.
Or on the plat, yes.
But will a public road show on a deed restriction?
Well, the deed, the deed goes to the actual title company and the landlord when they sign the contract. That's, to me, that's a really important question that'll get cleared up.
So is it true that if it's, these, these roads, you know, that are officially county roads, is it true that we either need to maintain them or vacate them?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
In, in theory.
In theory, because there's.
No, that's more than theory.
Yes, we.
We've been talking about that a long time.
That's what we've been working on.
Ms. Holdridge started doing about four years ago, is going through and finding all these roads, because there's roads in our county that lead, literally lead into a field that the county is maintaining.
And we need to get them closed and get them back on the tax roll. We literally have hundreds of streets within the city and the county that are in the middle of people's fields, and they go nowhere, and we need to get them on the tax rolls so people are paying the taxes because they lead nowhere.
There's a difference, there's a huge difference between a road that's been planned for future development and a road that's actually platted and it's actually deeded as a road.
Well, it's plotted, there's the plat.
Well, I'm saying, but the deed, the deed is gonna, I, he basically said that it's the deed, that he believed that when he bought that property, there was a deed restriction on that road. That road existed through a deed, and that's, and Laura, Ms. Holdridge is saying that might not exist. And to me, that's, that's your starting point.
Okay, it's a good starting point, but either if it's not on his deed or her deed, it's still a platted road.
True, that's, but that's, there's a difference there. That's, that's a, you know, you're looking at an easement issue there instead of an actual legally, I mean, there's a lot of platted roads.
So you're saying if it's on his deed, we couldn't close it if we wanted to?
Well, I would say there's a difference, there's a difference of opinion.
Okay.
With what the county's liability.
Was this, I mean, I would assume this was, anyway. Yeah. I would, uh, I would request we table this while, um, the registrar of deeds, Ms. Holdridge, Mrs. Maybe, sorry. Does her due diligence and investigation.
Okay.
Justin?
Justin?
So I have to publish a hearing twenty days in advance, so if we're tabling this, does it have to be published again twenty days in advance?
Well, I think you let Ms. Holdridge do her investigation first. I mean, obviously, um, Ms. Holdridge was right about, I mean, there, the property owners, the people that have the real interest in this, I mean, there's a, there's a property interest, but the property actually are the two owners. I mean, Odie and Susan have the real interest in the road, so we gotta get the deeds to find out if the question is there.
Do I need to publish this again twenty days in advance before we discuss it?
No, but, yeah, I think you're gonna have, I think you're probably gonna, you're probably forty days out before you have the next hearing.
Wouldn't you say if somebody wanted to build a new house right there, they have an interest in that roadway? If it's a public roadway today on a plat?
We're talking about two separate things. We're talking about a road that is, exists through deed and a road that exists through a plat.
Yeah.
And I'm, and we're trying to, one gentleman said that he believes that it exists by a deed, and Ms. Holdridge is saying that, and the landowners are saying that, that maybe it doesn't exist by deed. I don't know if Susan and Odie knew that when they signed their contracts that that road was part of their deed.
Yeah, I did not have any idea. Odie's the one that told me that we had that there, so.
Odie was aware of it, yeah.
Yeah, so if Odie was aware of it, maybe he had a deed and there's an actual, that road is there by deed, and there's a big difference.
So you're saying what her research might show some different legal requirements?
Well, if that road's there by deed, then you have a civil matter that you would have to probably take care of too, and then.
If it's just there by plat, it's up to us.
I would say that that would be correct. But by deed.
Yeah.
There's ownership there. I mean, I know of another property like this on Two Hundred and Thirty First Street that there's actually a road coming off Two Hundred and Thirty First to go into some land, and it's actually deeded, which is really different than plotted.
Yeah.
And so there's a road that the county doesn't have to maintain because it's private ownership.
Okay.
Just out of curi, I mean, just for my curiosity, Jason, do you know when this was, like, is this a thirty-year-old thing or a forty?
It's probably right there, thirty.
My house was built in ninety-five.
It's not, it's not the age. When they plotted that, when they plotted those lots, that easement of road driveway was the first I ever went in. So I'm assuming the legal description for those plotted lots encompass, you know, they taking effect that road driveway.
So, again, we get to clean up some county commissioners' stuff from years ago.
Well, it, it, the worst-case scenario is, is that you have a, a difference of opinion on how the deed should have been written. That, and that actually doesn't go to the county, that goes to the people that.
But the county, somebody had to agree to leave this right of way, which would have been the county commissioners.
Right.
They have partial legal.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just.
No, there's a difference, yeah, there's a diff, there's a difference between a deed and a plotted, plotted road.
I understand that.
Right, I'm saying, but the county, what he's saying is that that's deeded, that's not platted by the county, that was actually part of the lots that were sold.
But somebody accepted this, somebody accepted this plat somewhere.
I mean, I think he's saying that it was an agreement that that road would be there.
Right, handshake isn't gonna, that's different than.
Somebody approved it, I hope somebody approved the original plat with that road on there, somebody did somewhere.
That's what Ms. Holdridge is gonna investigate.
All right, perfect.
And they saw my original plat from thirty years ago.
That road, too, there. And we've got a partial.
Right, the plat would have had the, the, the road, but that doesn't mean that unless they're gonna maintain that road, they can close it. That doesn't mean that they have to leave that road open to get to a land behind it unless they're gonna maintain that road.
Well, my fault was why maintain it until it's ready?
Well, I'm maintaining it right now.
Because if the landowners, they, they either have to maintain it or close it, if the landowners are.
And Justin just said, I believe he said, if we leave it open, we should build a road.
Yeah.
No, I'm not.
No, that's not what he's saying.
Well, you said, you said in theory, I said in theory, he said it's more than theory.
Yeah.
It, it's either, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's bright line, Commissioner Beth, it's bright line, it could be the devil's advocate on this. It's either in the deed or not part, if it's not part of the deed, it's different legally than if it's part of the deed. That's what I'm saying. So we gotta find out if it's on the deed or not, because if there's a deed restriction or a deed that carves it out of there, so the original lots that were sold back in nineteen ninety-four or ninety-three, it might have had that road plotted and on the boundaries of the plat.
On a deed restriction, maybe, okay.
But what he was saying is, there's roads that are technically county roads that are not being maintained, and you're saying that we should be maintaining them.
Well, there's.
We should either vacate them or maintain.
That's my opinion. So you could have a, a low-maintenance road. We've talked about this before. There's, I mean, at least a hundred miles in our county that could be.
We've got some no-maintenance roads.
Well, yeah, well, I think that Eric and prior road bridge directors would disagree with that, but I'm just saying that, um, there are low-maintenance roads that are still owned by the county that are needed, like you need to get to a bridge or, you know, infrastructure that you need to get to. But there are low-maintenance roads in our county that could be vacated, but that's a, that's what Ms. Holdridge is working on, and that's different than what we're talking about.
How does she contact the property owners when we have it back on the agenda? By letter again, or?
I would go by letter, just to make sure that.
So I don't need to publish it again?
Well, you will have to publish again, but we're, we're, yeah, we're still forty days out.
Right.
We, I don't.
But I ha, I have to publish it at least twenty days prior, so.
What, what we could do is, I think Ms. Holdridge, this is probably fairly, right.
She does the research. I just, that's what, I wanted to make sure I get it published twenty days prior.
Right. Yeah, we can't have a hearing without the publication.
That's what I was just.
It's not like it's a future, we can make, you know, make sure.
Good.
And just very little background, I'll use Patty as an example. There are four streets and about six alleys up in Patty, our treasurer's office, that are in the middle of her field that I want to get vacated, I want the city to vacate, so Patty has to pay for it. And Patty's okay with that, because there, there's a main street up there that, you know, that they should have done when they vacated up there for the middle school, but she has a main street running through her property. And she needs to, we need to get that, all those streets and alleys vacated because it's all fenced off and, and there are streets and alleys that she owns up there. She's not paying taxes on those, and, and she's okay with that. Um, she actually said, hey, yeah, go ahead, and, but she has to go to the city and get it done. And there's literally hundreds of those in the city of Fort Scott and the county that houses are built on, garages are built on, that are in the middle of streets and alleys that we could be collecting taxes on, because somebody's not gonna move their garage, they're not gonna move their house because it's in the middle of a street that was there in the eighteen hundreds that is not there now. And just because it was a platted street, we're not maintaining them, probably not gonna maintain them, so we just as well get taxes on them. And that's what these are for. So, I'll go back and I'll look at the plaques and get the information and get them back to you.
Yes, Laura. We will be rescheduling the hearing, Jason. We'll get a notification in the mail.
Okay.
Of, of the hearing, uh, I hear a motion to close a public hearing on road closure.
I make a motion to close the public hearing of the, uh, vacating county roads.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I think you're still up, Mark.
Um, the next topic that we had on here was grant applications. Um, Shane has been working on some parks and recreations types grants, and basically what we're asking is authority to go out and search out some of these grants, um, one for the overpass study and some different things like that, and just asking for your blessing. Um, we've already started our research on maybe, uh, hoping to apply for some. Um, if there's a significant match, um, we'll bring it back to the commission before we apply for them.
Absolute, sounds good.
Mr. Megan, how's it going?
Justin's got a face.
We need to go into executive session to talk about a personnel matter, um, job description, job function. Susan, myself, and the three commissioners on this point. For probably seven minutes.
Okay, you, you, hey, stay, hang on. Um, Susan, you have an executive session on there. Can we combine them?
Yep, you sure can.
Perfect.
How long?
You better give us fifteen minutes.
Okay. Make a motion to go into executive session, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one, uh, to discuss personal matters, wait a second. Discuss personal matters, individual, non-lectured personnel to protect their privacy and be for performance and job duties. Sorry, it's messed up on there. Uh, be for fifteen minutes, three commissioners, Susan and Justin. We'll return here at, I'm gonna do my math wrong, forty-one, I believe, ten forty-two, actually.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Amy don't know that she got married this weekend. I slept like a baby last night, I was, I don't know why, I was tired. I got home from that meeting and I was, it was cold in there.
How'd that look, look?
Last night.
One match.
I got up four and then I drove around a little bit, checked the temperature.
That's a pretty good dog, about as straight as possible.
She's a pretty good female.
Thirty-five.
It was thirty-five degrees.
She is pretty, isn't she? I remember I had my minute ready to cough, I've been here too long.
Fred always used to say, if I can drive from my house to the board office, we can have a school.
I think that'll make, hey, charge you up a little bit, Susan.
I know, I know, I needed it.
That was always, you know, that, Fred would laugh, of course, he sent me a lot of, Fred literally was like, probably almost all the way down to the board office.
Yes.
From Highland.
From up there on Highland, absolutely, it would've been downhill.
To Maine, the board office.
He could've ridden the sled.
Oh, great.
Well, I was afraid it was gonna be one of those, uh, thirty-two degrees and.
Dicey.
The brick streets would be really slick and everything else would be okay or something like that.
That's what I was worried about, was the bricks, I mean.
I can drill down Maine and, uh, check it out.
My kids, I, one of my boys, my own little ex kid, one of my kids, the only bad wreck they had, they came off East Nash, they came off of the Jersey Street or whatever that is.
Which needed, and our good friend.
They get that brick, Jersey was fine. He hit that brick, spun around.
Yeah.
He telephoned the hall, he told the car, he was fine, but I told him that's, that was his, that was his lesson, drive on brakes.
A little brick street, they freeze over pretty quick.
If it was anything else, how they take that, it freezes just about as fast as the bridge.
My favorite is the hill, the Hammond Hill, going up that one, it was okay too. I just turned around, people, had the dog with me.
I'm sure there were some kids that were looking at that television.
Well, I looked out the front window and couldn't, you know, I can't see really well out there anyway, it was just a bit, it looked like there was snow on the ground, except the sidewalks looked clear. I better go grab it, and I got outside, it was just the way the moon was shining on the grass.
Yeah, well, four o'clock, I was not even thinking about the weather or anything else without that.
I got back home about four thirty, flying back in.
That you did, you did.
The dog went with me, she doesn't like riding with me when I'm doing that, cause I'll drive along, I'll hit my brakes like.
Well, I did that last night, I went to the board office, it was cold, and so I took off and I got halfway down, walked between fifth and sixth. Okay, we're good, nice. Last night? Give back the papers that.
Although the, her small bird maybe hit before we left, but it was good.
See, I'm not the only one who gets the point. Yep.
Well, I figured if I, if I drove across town and the temperature stayed up above freezing, I wouldn't have to drive so full and all the way to sleep, how do you feel about it?
It is, it really is.
I really should be both sides.
Yeah, yeah, me too, I did do. Yes, see both sides. Or I'm gonna make the county maintain my road. Um, so back to, uh, allowing us to search out some grants for parks and rec and other things, um, to get them, we're just asking for that, permission to do that. Okay.
I agree, but I think appropriate fine, you can look at some grants and recreation and other areas and go forward, and you can't get enough grants.
Yeah, yeah, and again, if there's a match involved, then we will come back to the commission before we apply. Um, ready funding, that is for, I had sent out to you all the allocations, um, from some of the pilot money that we had given them, and had allowed you to have time to review them, um, of how they've done their grant. and had allowed you to have time to review them of how they've done their grant funding. So if there was any questions there, I think Rob's still here, you guys could.
I do, yeah. Like, I'm not signaling anyone out, like it's gonna sound like it's like five thousand to Maplewood for sidewalks. Do verify that.
All right, come in, Rob. I question it. The grants that you issued were like, one of them were City of Mapleton for sidewalks. Who does the follow-up to make sure that they built sidewalks?
That would be us.
So, okay. So you followed up on all those grants?
Yep. We gave money to, for instance, Union Town, Ruatan, to build the bathrooms and they sent us pictures of their progress and.
So that's part of the process, you verify the work, good, that's all I wanted to know.
Now, Mapleton has not started their sidewalk project, however, they have to show that the money is still in the account every year until they use it. So they show us the account.
You might check their park improvements too. I frequent it, my parents live in Mapleton, so you might check their park grounds too.
Their park grounds?
The park improvements. I don't know, there was a ten thousand, looked like there was a ten thousand one to them for park improvements in twenty-one.
Yeah, it should've been for, I believe it's sidewalk in the park, not the, not the park.
For sidewalk and there's ten thousand for park.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll look, but. Yeah, yeah, but they, the way I was told is Mr. Post told me that they were gonna spend it when they got enough money to do the project. And so what we said is they have to show us that they didn't spend it on something else, they have to show us the account where the money that we gave them is stored. If they spent on something else, they obviously have to pay us back.
Can I answer my question? I figured you was on top of it, but I wanted to hear you say it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, there is a monthly budget report that I would like to start sending to the commissioners so that you guys can keep an eye on line items. I don't think in the past, we've usually just given you my financial stuff that I had done and the cash balance report. But I think it'd be important for you guys to start receiving that. And I, next week, you should have your financials plus that report and we can get that to you.
Will that show month, the year-to-date expenditures as well?
Yes.
As we go along?
Mm-hmm.
Kinda no way you're on budget compared to cash?
All departments, yep.
It will show cash also, cash amount or?
There is a report that shows you cash, it's a little bit harder to read, so I think I'll give you a cash report and that budget report that's more condensed.
Yeah. So this has gotta match this one though?
Yes.
The cash, okay.
Yes, yes. Um, next, the November twenty-second, you have a meeting at noon with, at the Empress Center with City. And so, and I have let Ashley know so she can get that, that notice put out. Um, and then next week, the audit will be done and then hopefully October financials will be done then. Um, and then my executive session, we've already done, so that's all I have to offer.
Is there actually gonna be an agenda, we're just gonna talk about things once we get there or?
Um, if you want me to put an agenda together, I can.
Well, one of the, as I mentioned earlier, I want to talk to the city about these meals on wheels and et cetera, that county funding a hundred percent of that and the city doesn't participate.
Okay.
I wonder why.
So I would ask that if there's any topics that you guys wanna talk about, to let me know and I'll put an agenda together and then I'll reach out to Jeff Hancock and also see if there's anything that they have.
Well, I think, and this, of course Eric could be there, I think they wanna talk about some of that lake road on the north end that had some failure, which is part of the city's, but I don't know what they wanna ask.
If you're talking about developing an agenda, I did have a conversation with Mr. Farmer last week on two topics. One, the land out at the landfill, making sure, okay, that's done, thank you. So he was gonna bring that up. And then the second topic is the city using our, letting us use our paver this summer. There's possibly a quick pro, like an exchange for some gravel, so we'd like to get that done too. Cause I won't be there.
They used our.
Cruise?
No, that's for a long way away, yeah.
This, the Fort Scott City Paver is the one that paved Maple Road, cause ours was down at that time.
Ours has been down for a long time. Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's actually a statute that Mr. Farmer and I are reviewing too about municipalities with some possible, you know, gravel and stuff too, so I think that might come up. So we can put that on the agenda too.
Okay, is Mr. Farmer gonna be there?
If he's not, I'll be there, I was being funny, I'll be there.
Okay.
How's that work?
Yeah. I know Eric several times has loaned our rollers to them.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to make sure that, I mean, we had it all season, I think if we rented one, I mean, that's one of those things that we need to work out so we don't have any.
Five thousand a month rent one.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, I'm just, something to think about down the road, because obviously, I've said this before in an open meeting, I mean, we don't, a county of our size doesn't need three pavers or two pavers. We don't need, that's gonna cause some problems, but you know, I think that there should be something down the road that we can work out to have some kind of equipment agreement so that we aren't having to spend, you know, double up on something that we maybe don't need, but once or twice a year. I don't know what that is, cause I know this is gonna, but I'm saying that there should be some way to save tax money by.
Well, I think it's fair to say that we had a decent path with the city in the past and then the last six months, that all fell apart for, and I don't know why.
Right.
Hopefully, this is the start of getting back to the savings for the taxpayers.
And then Pete said it better than I do, that's what I was saying, and so we need to get back to where we were.
There's been, in my opinion, a massive disconnect or failure from, I'll just say, let's say, both sides over the last six months, for whatever reason. I mean, we used to, you know, we had a pretty good continuity, in my opinion, or path with the city, and then it just went away.
Um.
So, but I mean, I know they had multiple changes on their commission and everything.
They've had some turnover over there too. And when we do that, there is an accounting function of that that has to be done, because we're exchanging services. And so we probably ought to determine who's going to do that, because right now, I don't think they have somebody over there that can, that can do that.
And with that too, the inter-local agreements, the ability to exchange things is going, is diminishing rapidly, because we don't have the same agreements that we had before.
Correct.
I think there's only one shared services that I'm aware of right now, and that is not as much money as it was when the shared services with administration, with EMS and things like that, so.
Yes.
We have to be really careful about that too. And that's a good point, cause that needs to probably be put on the agenda too, to talk that out.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Any else, Susan?
Unless you guys have anything for me.
Thank you. Shane Walker. Cliff and Art.
Yeah.
We're talking about that today. Can you read that?
Yeah.
Oh, we all, okay.
Good, I got you.
That's that sun landfill agreement, and I'll give a copy to Laura and have her set it to be, so that's all done.
Thank you.
I wanna thank Eric's guys for driving all the way out to Norton and pick those antennas up. So we're gonna get with the guys that we've been doing radio stuff with and see about getting that big one put out at Tomahawk here before it gets really bad weather.
Good.
That's all I've got right now.
Thank you, thank you for getting that wrapped up. That's really helpful to county and city, so thank you. Okay.
Tiana.
Tiana?
Yes, thank you. As you can tell from the agenda, what I'm requesting, you can tell when Justin sent the microphone. Um, I'm requesting an executive session for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. I'm requesting that the three commissioners and that County Counselor, Mr. Meeks, be present in that meeting. And there's quite a bit, so I, I would request maybe twenty minutes.
Your motion.
Attorney-client privilege, is that the one?
Yes, it was the KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two. I think that most appropriately.
And we need, who do we need again?
Uh, three commissioners and Mr. Meeks.
Okay, and you.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, and me, I'd like to be a part of it.
I make a motion to go into executive session, KSA seventy-five forty-three nine B two, taking for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. We're gonna need the three commissioners, County Counselor Meeks, and the county attorney.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
Yes.
Turn here at eleven twenty.
I'm sorry?
We'll return here at eleven twenty.
Okay, do I hear a second? I second it.
All in favor.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm going to it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to it. You know I'm going to it.
You know I'm going to read.
Make a motion to resume normal session, no? I guess there is a little bit of action. We're going to return into an executive session.
Second, Matt.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I make a motion to go into executive session again. It's going to be KSA 754319B2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. It's going to be for 10 minutes. It's going to be three commissioners, County Counselor Meeks and Tiana, County Attorney.
We'll return here.
31, 11:31.
That's second.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session, 11:32, no action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Clifton Beth.
Okay.
One more, people.
This will be really short. I make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 754319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with contracts. It will be for five minutes. Be three commissioners and county counselor Meeks.
And Rob?
Rob doesn't need to be in there.
Oh, he's pointing at himself. I didn't know.
He doesn't.
Okay.
Seven, 11:38.
Second.
Will you?
Discussing, all in favor? Aye.
Discussing all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session with action.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
That action will take place here in just a second. Justin's still right. Where'd he go?
He left.
Make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign a lease amendment with the, via Christie, for rent-free. They're gonna be able to stay in the hospital building rent-free for until December 31st of 2023. You don't, do you need to sign that or just Jim?
Just Jim. So here, well, let's to clarify, they get, I think, they've already not paid one month.
They have not been paying. So from this day, except for from last month till then, they're going to be rent-free.
Okay.
So I'm making a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign that agreement today or tomorrow.
It could be, it could be even in Wednesday afternoon or Thursday morning.
Thursday morning.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I make a motion for Chairman Harris to sign the, what did you say? The Estoppel? I don't.
No, there's three separate things. The donation agreement and the lease assignments to the, or whatever group you're gonna.
Okay. Make a motion for Chairman Harris on Thursday to sign the transfer of the hospital building to Legacy Health, um, along with.
Any all, any all documents needed for closing?
Any all documents that are.
To the donation there?
That are at the closing. And that will be on Thursday.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Your third motion, part of the donation agreement is the money.
ARPA. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Forgot about that. And I make a motion to, um, to transfer ARPA, ARPA funds and Mercy funds to Legacy Health along with the transfer of the building.
Second.
Well, aye.
You have to. It's part of the contract. So the, I'm assuming the ARPA funds is 1.4 million?
It's $2 million total.
Total. And then who do you want to have cut the check and give it to the title company?
Well, okay, so, yeah, that $2 million will be transferred to an escrow account by the county.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I want to clarify a couple things real quick. So, um, the commission made a decision not to have a special meeting on Thursday. I think this is actually a good thing. Once those contracts are inked and both parties have signed, they become public record. I'll be handing those over to Ashley. She can upload them into the system so that everyone in the county or the country could take a look at them. So the, the donation.
The ink is not dry.
Yeah. Ink's not dry yet, so they're not public record yet, but once the ink has been signed and the contracts are finalized, I'll get a copy to Ashley.
Okay. You done, Clifton?
I'm done.
Public comment section. Public comment section.
Hi, my name's, is this on? Yes. I'm Mark McCoy. I represent the S E K Southeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department Board. I'm currently on that board along with Clifton. There is an open position in Bourbon County for that board. And I have spoken to Ms. Ann Dare, who has graciously accepted to serve in that position if this commission would so choose to appoint her to it. So there is currently an open position. That's Bourbon, Anderson, Allen, and Woodson Counties were a strong participant in that board, and this position has been open for some time.
Like an excellent choice.
Sounds great.
Sounds great. Do you need a motion?
I, I.
I don't think we do.
Yeah.
Because it's not dealing with us.
I don't know. Counselor?
We don't need a motion that's not dealing with us.
Okay.
You guys can appoint whoever you want, can't you?
The board, no. The commissioners appoint who is on the board.
If the commission appoints someone that's on a board, they have, you guys have to make a motion.
So, so you're telling, so I will no longer be on that board? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir, there's three positions. Currently only two.
Okay.
Two, yeah. Now, the, the, the commission could select another person to replace you if so desired.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying. We're not, I mean, in my opinion, we're no longer doing that. If the county is, has a, if a county is supposed to have a position on a board, it should be a county commissioner. Or we're doing away with all, in my opinion. So I know we have other boards where the county commissioners are supposed to be on there and we're not, and I don't agree with that. But anyway, neither here nor there, that's for another topic. I will make a motion to have Ann Dare be the third county representative for the multi-county health department.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Okay. Commission comments.
I was literally just clearing my throat.
Is that public comment? That's it?
Yeah.
Ann, you got nothing?
I do.
About got right by.
Well, I know it. Just an, just an afterthought.
Oh, yeah.
Um, no, I guess just want to encourage, I appreciate the fact that you guys are digging into the budget, the financials, the line item, the appropriated funds and allocations and all of that, and getting more educated in that. And two weeks ago and several meetings previously leading up to that, we're talking about the transient guest tax for the county. And I guess, and at the time, decided not to do anything about that, I guess I would ask that you, um, continue to look at that in some sort of fashion rather than waiting until some business does come in with 10 beds and, and then all of a sudden, oh, now we got 10 beds we can access. You know, I guess I'd rather see us be proactive in some things rather than feeling like we're always catching up or we're always behind in some things. I understand it's not a massive amount of money, but in this day and age, if we're looking at cutting or reducing in order to save money, uh, what the county gives to some of these other organizations, I also feel like we need to, to capture every dollar we can that's out there to capture. That's all.
I'll comment when our, in our public, in our commission comment on that, myself anyway.
Okay, go ahead.
Justin. It's your time, man.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to get some stuff done for you guys. I hate this, and I have to do this, but I want to go into executive session for three minutes for personnel items, non-elected, identifiable, job description, job performance.
I make a motion to go into executive session case A 7543-19B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personal privacy. Three commissioners, county councilor Meeks. Anything else? For how long?
Uh, five minutes.
Five minutes. We return here at.
Fifty-one.
11:52. Uh, yeah, back to this room.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.